Here. Here, please stand at the pledge allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place, thereof posted in the Borough Hall and in the Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the rep in the twin boroughs. The Board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss with public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first, at the beginning of the meeting, for agenda items only, and the second, at the end of the meeting, for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not do negatively or derogatory matter about any employee of the Board or any statement. Committee of the whole, I seek a motion to approve the minutes for February 5th and February 11th. Can you need a second?
Sure.
Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna start off with our student board representative, and we're ready.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all, and it's been a busy March, and I think April is just around the corner. Earlier this month, the theater department's production of Little Shop of Horrors was a huge success, receiving great reviews from teachers, families, and students alike, and personally, I can't wait to see which show they do next. Recently, we had our annual M.P. Bowles fundraiser in the cafeteria, in which many students participated by either making a volunteer, volunteering, or supporting the cause. It was a great night for elusive art and delicious soup, given by various teachers in the building. Last week, the Spanish, French, and Mandarin arts societies inducted new members into their respective societies. The inducted students all showed exceptional skills and learning a foreign language, which was highlighted during a collective performance of We Are The World. Tomorrow night is the New Milford Education Foundation Gala, an exciting event that will honor R.M.I.A. Mr. Petrino, and teachers such as Mrs. Haderbauer, Mrs. Bernstein, and Mrs. Schwartz. On Friday, student athletes will participate in the spring season pep rally, which will present the season's sports and the players. It's a fun assembly that brings everyone involved for some school spirit. Lastly, the student council is working hard on planning this year's Spring Olympics, and we will have a fun week of different spirit themes, and we've got an exciting day full of games and competitions, and we'll conclude with a great little winner, and it all comes up some great competition amongst other and other classmates. That's all I have for the night.
Does anyone have any questions for Andrew? Do you have any themes wrapped yet for the evening?
Not that I know, but I know it's gonna be good. It's always fun.
Thank you for your port, you do not have to stay, I know you're busy. Okay, next is our special presentation for the wrestling team.
Uh, yes, so, we have a lot of young men here, and you know, and I appreciate you coming here, I appreciate the parents coming here. We have champions, and that's not always said in every district, and I think it's the first time said for New Milford, uh, as state sectional wrestling, wrestling champions. And I'm gonna share a tidbit, and I wanna call out, you know, the real people here. I didn't have much experience with wrestling growing up, I was a basketball guy, don't judge me, um, but I did coach it. Um, Mr. Peroni actually asked for me to coach it, and that's why I developed a complete appreciation for it. Um, as a coach, training young men, and then putting them on a mat, all alone, against another young person, ah, I've seen the toughest kids crumble, I've seen kids that I didn't think had it, have it in them, just absolutely rise to the occasion. I've seen kids win and have absolute glory, I've seen them lose and look like the most loneliest, you know, delicate people I've ever seen, and so that's when I really developed an appreciation for it. And then, I, I loved it so much, just coaching for those few years, I tried to force my son into it. And when he was in like kindergarten, first grade, like, all good, like, he was just kinda bigger and stronger, and then, it's, it's something that if you don't love, if, if you're not gonna stick with it, and eventually after year three, he's like, "Dad, I'd like to try basketball." And I was like, "I get it, I'm not gonna force him." But it broke my heart, because I think the lessons learned from wrestling are so transferable to life. I don't think, I mean, I was not a football guy, played college football, I played baseball, basketball, any sport I could play, I think wrestlers work possibly the hardest, you know, um, it is grueling, you're sweating with each other, wrestling with each other, putting them on the mat, you got regular, you got just washing the mats, breaking down the mats, rolling up the mats. It's like a nobody dunker. Even when you think practice is over, you gotta roll up the mats. Like, it's just, there's so many tedious elements to it, and it's a love, and it's a passion, so to go this far and achieve so much, shows so much about what's inside of you, what's in the community, you represent this community, and I completely appreciate it. I'd like to thank Mr. Riccadelli, Mr. Cattiers, Grady, Matt, Glenn, the parents for all your support, the Booster Club, the students for making the trek, you know, sometimes hours away, excuse me, hours away, to support it, that's something wrestling too, when you're on the mat all alone, under the spotlight, and you hear fans behind you, it's got, it's gotta be adrenaline rush, um, and I think everyone experiences it with you. So again, I can't thank you enough, I know the mayor wanted to be here as well, but unfortunately, his budget meeting is tonight, and it's not something you can avoid, but he'll put his stamp on here, you know, Mr. Petrino, the whole community, so thank you again for everything you've done, Mr. Riccadelli, I'd like you to come up and speak to me.
So, I'm gonna steal the word, unique. So, wrestling is very unique, right? It's a team sport, but it's also individual. You guys are the ultimate team. What you did, you said the word crumble, none of them crumbled. You were there that night in Kiddatini, it was, I mean, it was fascinating what happened that night, just to see you guys come together, individuals making a team, it was such a fun night. Those of us that were there, there were a bunch of us in the room, it was just, it was probably the most fun night I've ever had in this job, watching you guys just bring it all together, do what you had to do that night, we talked a couple things, probably before the match, that, you know, and the coach is gonna really share everything, um, so before I even do anything, I'm gonna thank everyone here, thank you for having us here, that's number one, um, but I wanna thank you guys, you know, it, it's, it's probably the best part of being an athletic director is watching coaches, teams, parents, and the community come together as one, right? And that's what you guys did. First state sectional ever in school history, which is unbelievable, right? I mean, I can see, I have all these things written down, of course, I'm not even paying attention to it. A few years ago, we only had a few kids in the program, and we had to combine with Woodridge, right, for one year, and now here we are, coaches brought, brought in, how many kids? We had thirty-eight kids in the program this year, and then here we are at the ultimate goal, right? Um, I, I could be more proud of all of you, and I'm not gonna get into all the little stats, 'cause that's your job, but just think about what you guys did, you'll remember this, we talked about, right, legends, right, leaving, leaving a stamp on the community when you guys leave here. Your match, think about your match, right, Ryan? I mean, again, I'm not trying to steal your job, but that match, we would sit, I mean, it was do or die, right? We wouldn't have been in Kiddatini if you did not do that that night. So, again, that's team, that's what it's all about. So, congratulations, this is unbelievable, we have a plaque for each of you. Mayor Petrino is not here, as you heard, so he has certificates for each of you. Um, after Coach speaks, Mr. Glasso and I are gonna unveil something special, um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Coach, that's yours. And before I do, just let you remember one little thing, right? Team of the Year, Burton County, first time in all the years I've been involved, that we had a Team of the Year at the Burton County Dinner last week, there were four hundred fifty people in the room, we had three full tables, it was an awesome night. Burton County Coach of the Year, District and Region Assistant Coach of the Year, also District and Region Head Coach of the Year. That's some accomplishment, that really is, and that just shows it's all about a team. And that's what we talk about here, right?
Yep.
All right, so I'm turning it over to Coach.
Thank you. Thank you to the Board, Mr. Glasso, everybody, we saw all the support that we were getting. Mr. Riccadelli, I know I did not make your life super easy over the last several years, especially this past year, and, and really, I thank you for all the support, you know, every time I asked for something, we would get it, so, you know, it's, it's from the top down, so really, I, I appreciate it very much. I know you guys have a lot to say, so just give me five minutes. A lot of people, even parents of wrestlers in previous years, they would be like, "I don't get it, it's just an individual sport, it's an individual sport," and I would argue it is the least individual sport there is, in that basketball, you could have a star player that puts up forty points a night, triple double every night, and carries the team to where they need to get to. Football, you could have a quarterback that does everything. Baseball, you could have a pitcher that goes down and throws a perfect game every time they go out there. Soccer, you could get somebody that puts up five goals and they carry the team. Wrestling, each individual, each of the fourteen guys that we put out there, the fourteen different weight classes, they're only able to get six points, that is the maximum amount of points that they could get. So you could have the greatest wrestler in the history of the world, and they can only get your team six points. Now, I was looking at it, our four big matches, Ponton Lakes, Ramapo, Butler, Ponton Lakes again. Thirty-nine, thirty-seven, two-point win, thirty-two, thirty-one, one point, forty-one, thirty-six, five, forty-two, thirty-five, seven-point win, and then thirty-eight, thirty-one, seven-point win against Kiddatini. Those are one-point, uh, one-match wins, right? If one person that won loses, that could swing it enough that we end up losing. And I looked at it, and we know this going into the matches, we've won seven, we've lost seven against Ponton Lakes, won seven, lost seven against Ramapo, won seven, lost seven against Butler, won eight, lost six against Ponton Lakes, won seven, lost seven against Kiddatini. So as coaches, we go through the lineup, and we, you get a good idea, right? Like, if there's a twenty-and-one New Milford wrestler going up against a two-and-twelve Ponton Lakes wrestler, you can kinda pencil them in, we're expecting a tech fall or a pin, plus-five, plus-six, somewhere in that range, right? So we gotta find seven wins, tighten and find seven wins. Now, our four captains, Devon Ryan, Jersey Ryan, Sutter Tataro, Joe Angels, you can almost lock them in, in pen, for plus-six, every single one of our matches. So now we got our four wins, now where are you gonna find the three wins? Okay? Every single one of these guys, and I didn't wanna forget anybody, so I wrote everybody together, Stell, Aramis, Mulligan, Cole, Robbie, Chris Dunn, Ryan Franklin, James Collins, Jacob Aldenado, Kyle Dunn, Asher Yu, and Thomas Seaby, of course. Each one of these guys, at one point in these five critical matches, over sixteen-and-two seasons, was responsible for one of those three wins that we had to get. Now, that's not enough, okay? We talk about, you wanna win big, lose small, meaning, if you're gonna win, you wanna win by a tech fall, which gets the team five points, a pin, which gets the team maximum, six points. So you wanna win big, and if you're gonna lose, and we know those losses are gonna come, you look at it, seven losses for all the key matches, right? You wanna lose small, so if you're gonna lose, you wanna lose by one or two points, so that the team, the other team, only gets three. So, every single match, whether you win or lose, is going to be saving or gaining points for New Milford. And so, the losses are just as valuable as the wins that we're putting out there. So, yes, we, we have hammers on our team, studs that we can absolutely rely on, but even the kid that goes out there, and there's several of them sitting here right now, that are responsible for state sectional title. If you're eight-and-ten, and you're going up against a kid that's twenty-one-and-two, and you only lose by eight points, you saved us two points there. And I just read off the margin, those points matter, those points matter. I did get banged for non-sports in life. And you can imagine, like, as coaches, as coaches, we go on the whiteboard, and, and we're pretty accurate, we know going into the match, we're either gonna win by three or lose by three, and so I knew going up against Ponton Lakes, that it was gonna be right there, I had it set plus-one, I think, then, right, for that, that first match, and then when we got here, when I got here, I was dying inside, because I knew how tight it was gonna be, and you guys bailed me out many times this year, so, um, it's a special team, it's a special team, it's a sport where, from a very young age, a lot of you have started, five, six years old, right? It's, it's, it's a very individual sport for many, many years, and then to try to shift that mindset to like, hey, I might need you to go get a loss for me, and it's gonna hurt your record, and you might get a head-to-head loss against a kid that we know is better than you, but if you can save us two points, or one point even, that's gonna make a difference. And every single one of the guys in the room bought into that. Halfway through the year, Mr. Glasso, I reached out to you for advice, because we were going through a lot of injuries on the team, and I brought the team into the classroom, and we put a New Milford injury report, like the NFL teams put out their weekly injury reports, we had ten different injuries out of our fourteen guys, and we were halfway through the season, we knew that we had these critical matches coming up, and all these matches were gonna be close, right? So if you take any one of these guys out of the room, we're not here tonight, we're not here tonight. And they made a commitment to themselves and to the team, that they were going to, whether they won or lost, they were gonna go for it, they were gonna go for it, they were gonna push through, and they were gonna do it, because not only did they wanna do it for themselves, but they wanted to do it for the team. And so, guys, really, I mean, you guys are legends, I mean, really, like, everything that you did this year, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, forty years from now, all right, you're gonna be able to look back and, and really be proud of what you guys accomplished together this year. And the final thing that I wanted to say was, we knew who our, who our best guys were, right? Like, we know that, but you need fourteen guys. One, two, three, four, five guys is not enough, you need fourteen guys. And without the coaches here, Matt specifically, Matt came on, on board three years ago, and Matt was able to take over the practice room and develop the first guy on the roster to the fourteenth guy on the roster. So that, that loss that we know is gonna happen, instead of it being a minus-six, to be a minus-five, and that makes all the difference in the world. So, without the coaches, Matt, without you here, we're not here either, right? So, um, it's important that we all thank you guys, thank you for the work that you've put in, because Matt would be a guy that would show up, and he would stay from three to five-thirty, and then he'd bring a couple guys, and they would go work out again from seven-thirty to nine-thirty, and they were putting in double sessions throughout the year, and those, that kinda commitment is what it takes to be champions, and, uh, and that was a big part of that, and, uh, and Glenn, it's been great having you here, working out with the guys, I know that as we get a little older in age, it's not as easy, being out there and scrapping with some of the guys out there, so, uh, it makes a difference, it makes a difference. Um, guys, I, I speak on behalf of the coaches, we love you, you're the best, you're the best, you guys are the best team that's ever done it, and that's not even up for debate, okay? And each and every single one of you played a major, major part in this, and that's not, there shouldn't be any one of you that's like, "Oh, Coach is just saying that," each and every one of you, I know, and we're gonna go over this at the team dinners, I don't wanna take up all of your time, I'm gonna go one by one, and talk about how each and one of you contributed to what we did, okay? We'll have a nice moment next week, is that next week?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on a day-by-day basis. Um, so we'll, we'll go through that, okay? But I just wanna let you know, on behalf of New Milford, okay, I'm a New Milford guy, born and raised, all right? On behalf of New Milford, you made us all very, very, very proud, and, uh, and we wish you nothing but, nothing but the best moving forward. So again, born, raised, thank you all very much, guys, good luck. Glad you guys brought it in, see you back there, you guys drove all the way out to Kiddatini, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
They didn't come to Del Valley.
They didn't go to Del Valley. We're forgetting about that.
So we have two parts, um, two more parts to add in, this is number one, but there's a second part. So I received an email from the Burton County Commissioner's Office, which is apparently very prestigious, so I talked to Mayor Petrino about this, he said it's a great, great honor, we're being honored, you guys are being honored, either next week or sometime in May, from Commissioner Tom Sullivan, we're gonna be going down to Hackensack to explain him more, but apparently it's a very big honor, uh, it's a Burton County honor, so I, I took the invite, I thought it was fair, we're going. I think everybody would agree, I think parents would agree, so you guys agree? Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so I just wanted to make you know that, I don't have a date yet, he's going to tell us exactly what it is, but Mayor Petrino, so he wasn't able to make it tonight, as you know, however, he came to us regarding something that's in this bag, he thought this would be a great honor for you guys, so that no one ever forgets who you guys are, so, it's an honor.
You can always thank Mayor Petrino.
So, there are entrances as you come into, into the town, right? There's one in Oredell, and then I think the second one is, uh, up Madison, right? Am I correct? So they will be hung up, so everyone can see them as they come into town. Then I'm sure you've seen them in Emerson, right? Baseball one that's been in Emerson for twenty-five years, so you have, you have wrestling, all right? That will stay there for as long as we're around, so that no one ever forgets what you guys did here. So congratulations.
Why don't you guys get it? Come on over here.
Guys, why don't you come on over? Guys, once you get your thing, go up behind, uh, the table up there, so we can get a quick picture. Ryan, Jersey, Jojo, um, James Collins, Thomas Seaby. Is that weird? Sutter. Aramis, Robbie. Coaches, come on. Yeah, yeah.
Someone cut their hands off.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, too.
Now you know what it looks like, the case one of it.
Have Jojo over here, we have to stand, step by step.
Anybody else? All right, guys.
Guys, we go on the side of the other seats, all right? Yeah.
No, he's still wrestling. I mean, he was a little flustered. I have to ask some. He's still playing soccer.
I'll be here.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, Joe, this too, right?
Uh, yeah, I'll come back at them. You can carry them.
Dad, you tell me when you're ready. Okay. Superintendent School Department, Michael Otto.
Thank you, it was a great presentation. First, we have our new Director of Special Services of the audience, Mrs. Allen Moore. The full board, we want to welcome you to the district, um, I don't know, I might be the most excited. Right now, we're in two roles.
Longtime company, yeah.
So I'm really looking forward to it. I've already taken my tour of halls. I think her very much sharing ideas. I know it's gonna be terrific because she has a great mentality for New Milford. She's down to earth, but she's open-minded. It's gonna be a great matter.
I am from Monticello. I was here.
Oops.
It's a slight, it's a slight rivalry.
It's like, yeah, I caught that. I've been having wrestlers in my family. Now, I'm very excited. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here. April seventh.
April seventh.
It'll be at your door. Okay, real quick, some changes that took place after the last work session that are on this agenda. I just want to make sure, you know, as transparent as possible, you know, standard. So on the board action, we talked about the calendar for next year, but we want to talk about the calendar for this year. And we want to make sure we get everyone the blackout dates since we didn't have all our emergency dates. And we give that too. So we're pretty much walking this on. We want approval of revised district calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five, this current year. For blackout day on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. So those grades that were, those dates that were going to grade out are now going to be yellow for days of, for all students and all staff. We still have the one emergency day in McKibbie for a random flood day, which I hear happens in New Milford. And hopefully that... But we have it still. So I'd like to approve that. Personnel. These murders, total hours and days were revised for E S Y. It's about six and a half hours a day. Now, five and a half for twenty-five days, now four. Mrs. Trento, instructional assistant at Gibbs, retired, effective six thirty, twentysix out of twenty-five. She had been in the district, I think, for seventeen or eighteen years as an instructional assistant surrounding our most needed population. So hats off to her. We hope she has a wonderful retirement. In finance, we also added the approval of a lighting protection system for commercial recreation. This is something that we don't want to save money in the area. I think it's dangerous, and we need the lighting detection system to work. As for district happenings, last two days, I addressed the incident that happened on Monday, March seventeenth. There's been no updates regarding it, but please know it is completely ongoing. I talk to the prosecutor's office every other day, police pretty much every day, and lawyers consistently as we progress forward. I do want to thank the police. I feel like I'm talking to the police too much. Berkeley knows this, but a couple weeks ago, I guess the Friday before, two, three Fridays ago, there was a transformer that blew off a telephone line and landed on a car outside of Berkeley and lit it on fire. Outside of Berkeley, on the street, and the car called fire. And then the car got so hot, it melted part of the car in front of it. And I got the call. I was there. The police were already there. Fire department was there. As I was walking up, obviously it's not a good scene, but you're safe, but it was pretty exciting. There was, it was a little many explosions. Everyone was safe, but the tires exploded because they heat up or they die. But everyone was safe the whole entire time. The kids responded great. They did shelter in place, so all activities continued. The police were all over. A P C engineer was there faster than I ever saw. And I think it started like around twelve-thirty-one, and it was wrapped up before dismissal time. So I couldn't put out the e-blast like any normal dismissal, because you never interrupt elementary dismissal and arrival. It becomes crazy, and I can't thank D P W instrumental. The police, obviously, fire department, the P C engineer as well. Everything worked so smoothly. I can't thank them enough. So they've been, for the past couple of weeks, they've been on speed dial for me. The N J G P A L I D A, which is a world-class instructional design and assessment, are all done. Correct? That's great. So the N J G P A is like the state assessment for the high school, the high school equivalency. So third grade buddy presentations took place from Ms. Zachary's office. Students went down to Berkeley and Gibbs to teach kids what bullying is, how not to bully, and share interesting tidbits about themselves. We had a referendum meeting with the architect, and we're going over the next steps. So the board will be kept informed. Also, the public will take a survey. Just kind of resurrect what the referendum was, get their feedback, and we'll start a committee. We do have a timeline for that. We have an idea, Stephanie and I, Ms. Odaxa, of how we want to get this out and roll this out. You know, the board will definitely be involved in the decision-making process and how we do so. But we want to make nice, informed decisions. We have Q S A on Tuesday, so right now all hands are on deck for that. But we will move towards that, the referendum after that. Myself, Ms. Odaxa, and Mr. Watson attended a math program meeting in Fairlawn. They were very receptive, just looking at different ideas of how they utilize their personnel in their math program. We are always looking for P D, and I thank Ms. Odaxa for going, and obviously Mr. Watson for reaching out and arranging it for us. P T O Berkeley night out, Gibbs night out, and M P H S murder mystery all took place this past month. I was at all of them. Glad to see a lot of you there as well. All great fundraisers, a lot of parent involvement, which is an excellent aspect of New Milford. We have an Unsung Hero Award, Marcelle Brousse. And Bergen County Unsung Hero Award is an annual award given to a high school senior from each of Bergen County's high schools. And the award recognizes students who have made a significant impact on the school community and, in this case, have overcome obstacles. So Marcelle overcame an obstacle when she was younger in running track and succeeded. And she became captain of her cross-country team and was a peer mentor, an all-around exceptional student, exceptional human being. So we'd like to congratulate her. The SEAL by Literacy, we have thirteen students this year. So the SEAL by Literacy is the New Jersey State SEAL brothers. We recognize the graduating high school students who demonstrate proficiency in English in one or more other languages. So awarding them a certificate in transcript of notation and steel can help students gain recognition for their language skills, potentially leading to scholarships and/or better jobs. So we had one in Chinese, three in French, eight in Spanish, and one in Turkish. So pretty diverse there. March fourteenth, if you don't go to this, I'm going to recommend you go next year. The Empty Balls fundraiser. Fan?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what? Alright.
You said if you don't go to this, like if...
Yeah, if you don't go to this, next year, go to this. The Empty Balls fundraiser was fantastic. I'm proud of you, like my whole family. So what Ms. Menesia does, she has her students throw two hundred bowls on the pottery wheel. She has her art class glaze them. And then for fifteen dollars, you get a bowl and you get to fill it with soup and everything else, and there's music playing in the background. What a wonderful event. I saw teachers there. Teachers made soup. You fill, you know, a bowl with soup. It's fantastic. I bought one, and then I couldn't take my eyes off another one. And so I bought another one, and that's pretty much how it goes. Fantastic program. I would definitely encourage it next year. I'm bringing my whole family. We had mock trial success. So the mock trial team is a group of students participating in like a simulated trial to practice their legal skills. It's a competition. So we did really well. Two students recognized in the courtroom news reporter contest sponsored by the N J State Bar Association. Nicole Choi, grade eleven, took first place, and Moses Deuce, grade eleven, took third place. They attended the state finals today. So that's wonderful. Mr. Wilson was very proud. I know one of the wrestling coaches was not here, Brady, because he was at the mock trial. So kudos to him. You know, he was a wrestling coach, mock trial, you know?
Baseball coach.
Yeah, baseball coach. Good for him. I'm glad to see the young teachers getting involved like that. We had a middle school essay award winner. Well, New Milford has a lot of triple award winners. Two thousand twenty-four, Erin Lee wrote home the water we need as part of the New Jersey Water Environment Association. And she took second place in this event. March twentieth was the World Language Honor Society induction. It's a great event, mostly run by the kids, which is nice to see. We offer three languages in Little Park, Mandarin, French. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. New Milford, Mandarin, French, and Spanish. Thank the New Milford Education Foundation for the donations, donations, gives today. I was down to give, and they did day clay, which we don't have kilns down there yet. We're working on it, but the day clay, which was sponsored by the Ed Foundation. Pretty much it's clay that you don't have to fire in a kiln. And it acts like real clay. The only thing is, you don't glaze it like real clay. So it's a fantastic project for all the kids. And then Berkeley's doing it tomorrow, so I'll stop down there to see them. They donated well over twenty thousand dollars for these little programs. We can't thank them enough, including the sign outside the Denazian that lights up that used to have like purple brown mold on it. They replaced that for us as well. So again, I can't thank them enough, Mr. Catherine O'Donnell and the board. Hi, Mrs. Odaxa and I, and Shane McGinley went to see Ms. Tambucio speak at the Bergen County Curriculum Consortium. So I was glad to see she is not fully retired. She retired from here, but she is very alive with the Hall Cost curriculum and Talents curriculum across the state of New Jersey. In terms of athletics and co-curricular, Will Shop of Horrors, fantastic musical. I hope you all saw it. I mean, there were parts of it when I was looking at the stage, thinking that this is like an on-Broadway musical, especially with those puppets and the lighting and everything coming together. The greatest thing that I saw, though, was in the weeks leading up, I've never really been involved in musicals, so I kept popping in for the set builds and all that. And there's a lot of alumni that come back weeks on end to help build that set. That is all hand-built and then broken down on the day. We're hoping they win some awards, but the community of people that helped make those, make that play happen is fantastic. And that's what I took from it the most. We have a lot of people that still want to come back and give back to New Milford, even though they graduated. Even famous people like Rob McClure. He was there for the set builds, driving up from Philadelphia at least two times that I saw him there. So really fantastic. Winter sports, yeah, so wrestling, we just did competitive cheerleading, won the league championship basketball. Boys were third in their division. We had the one thousand point scorer, Willis Bowlin. Leila Grund was top twenty in the state first team in all group one. Indoor track, we had five medalists. Swimming, third in the league for the boys. And fifth for the girls. We are happy with the new co-op. We are no longer with Duma. We are with Wallbrook now. I heard that. Relationship went really well. Hockey, we lost them the Silver Cup. Spring sports, like we're done. So we have baseball, softball, golf, spring track. Boys tennis and flag football for the girls. Upcoming events, the gala is tomorrow. I hope to see you all there. March twenty-eighth is the Berkeley Theater Week performances. I heard these have been going on for decades. I have not seen them, so I'm looking forward to that. April first, we have Q S A, holding our breath. April second, Elementary Academy Night, Family Night, with Ms. Odaxa. April third through fifth, David Owens' play, Frozen Junior now. The same set builders worked on the set for Frozen, so all hand-built. I'm looking forward to that. April fifth, just in case you're interested, the Bergen County Job Fair for teachers at Mawawa High School. If there's any aspiring teachers out there, please go. We're always looking for great teachers. April tenth is Gibbs International Night Out. April fourteenth and eighteenth is spring break. It's been a long stretch. I'm forward to it. That is it for my report. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Assistant Superintendent Report, Lauren Odaxa.
I would have a report, just an update. You mentioned Math Night. We had to cut the registration. We have two hundred people registered for Family Math Night.
That's a record.
Yes, thank you to Ms. McGinley and Mr. Beer for organizing that. We look forward to it. So I just want to express my gratitude because I know that that's, it was a lot of hard work getting that many people to come out. So that's exciting. And just, we had yesterday our Teacher of the Year panel. So we started that process and look forward to recognizing them later.
That's it. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Lauren? Okay, Business Initiator Report, Stephanie Kuchar.
I don't think I want to thank you.
Any correspondence?
None tonight.
Perfect. Okay. Open to the public for items on the agenda as outlined in Milford Board of Education, by law, zero one six seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. I seek a motion. Motion. Paige, seconded by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone in the public? Okay. Seek a motion to close the public. Joe, seconded by Andrew. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, board action. Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for B A twenty-four dash twenty-five with point seventy-two, point seventy-three, point seventy-four, and point seventy-five. Any second? Paige, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Education Programs and Curriculum Committee is... Who else is on that committee? Would you like to present?
Oh, I think I... Twenty-one, I'll do it. I seek a motion for C or C twenty-four dash twenty-five, point thirty, point thirty-one, and point thirty-two.
Need a second? Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Personnel, having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for P twenty-four dash twenty-five, point ninety-nine, point one hundred, point one oh one, point one oh two, point one oh three. I need a second? Tony, roll call.
Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Keljo?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Dunn?
Yes.
President, join us?
Yes.
Okay, Finance and Facilities Committee, Cheryl Calmarone.
I seek a motion for approval of F twenty-four dash twenty-five, point one eight four, point one eight five, point one eight six, point one eight seven, point one eight eight, point one eight nine, point one nine zero, point one nine one, point one nine two, point one nine three, point one nine four, point one nine five, point one nine six, point one nine seven, point one nine eight, point one nine nine, point two hundred, point two zero one, point two zero two, point two zero three, point two zero four, point two zero five, point two zero six, point two zero seven, point two zero eight, and point two zero nine. Oh, and point two ten, point two eleven.
I need a second? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
She did those again.
It was lost. Athletics Co-Curricular Committee, Nicole Dunn?
I seek a motion for A C twenty-four dash twenty-five, point fifteen, and point sixteen.
Need a second? Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No policy? Any old business? Any new business?
I just want to let the board know, we literally, right before our meeting tonight, we had an athletics meeting, so I'll have notes shared. Because I was in C N I at a baseball game, so I'll have it shared by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Any board member request for additional information? Okay. Open to the public as outlined in the Milford Board of Education, by law, zero one six seven. Zero one six seven. Each statement made by our participant shall be limited to three minutes. Paige, seconded by Andrew. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone from the public? Nope. Okay, I seek a motion to close. The public? Joe, seconded by Cheryl. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, are we coming? Okay, closed session. It is hereby moved that the Board of Education adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of Section Eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one P L, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject, personnel matter, the minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I seek a motion to go and close.
Will we go? Will we take action when we come back?
We will not proceed in action when we come back. So it's Tony, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.